So let's go and call the all the meeting to order. First off, to approve the agenda. So if everyone can take a look and I'll take a motion to approved. Look good. We have a motion to approve.
Some move.
Okay, motion from Brian, give me the second.
Second.
Second from Gabe. Any discussion? Okay. Those in favor of approving the agenda say aye, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so agenda approved, we can proceed. Comments from the chair? I don't really have anything that comes to mind. You know, we have a lot of balls in the air, I guess. But no new developments or anything for me. Does does anyone else have anything of interest? Okay. Then the next on the agenda is general business. I don't see any members of the public here to discuss anything that's on the agenda, so we'll breeze past that and jump into. So Mike, we have the review of the revised webpage templates. So yeah, so yeah, we took a look last time. There was just three of us, but everything, you know, seems improved. Did you want us to pull it up and look at it, Mike, or were we waiting for SE group or what?
I remember I talked to them last week and I wasn't sure if they were going to be able to make it. I know Julia was definitely not going to be able to make it. So I sent I sent them invites, but I wasn't sure if they were going to make it.
Okay. That's okay. We can, we can pull it up. Everyone, there's a, there's a link in the agenda.
Do you want to pull it up and share it from your end?
I can do that. Okay. So assuming things are the same as last time, as last time that we looked at this, the last meeting. It is actually, I don't think it is the same. So this is historic resources page. There's an intro with bullet points.
I think they were trying to make the shift to making it more forward looking at the start.
Okay.
I didn't, I wasn't able to watch the previous meeting. I knew it was pretty short, so.
Yeah, Aiden just just brought us through it and we checked for the things that we've given feedback about and it was there. But yeah, it looks like maybe some work's been done since then.
Didn't, didn't sound like they were going to have a lot of time to work on stuff because they're under, they have a couple of the contracts that are closing up, so they were gonna be out.
Okay, so here's, here's the new maps. Not sure if people have seen that. But I think that they, they've drawn out different features on the maps with the text over here. So you can see this is highlighted and it lets you know that what you're looking at is the designated downtown. And they also have words over here to the side of the map.
I found these changes to be a lot, made it all a lot easier to understand. I think last time we kind of told them that we didn't know what all the different colors were, so I think it's really well laid out now.
Yeah, and they've added these buttons. That was something from last time. So yeah, I think that the, the maps are more like what we've said. With the synergies with other plan chapters.
Yeah, I thought the synergies was pretty good before. I don't think they had too many changes to make in that one.
No. They changed under the implementation summary. There used to be a description and they just removed that. We had talked about different options for for that. So now it just runs through the goals.
And then who, yeah, who is involved got put to the bottom.
Yep.
So.
So we talked about that. Anybody have any response to the current state?
Because maps are awesome.
So I think mostly what they are looking at are, you know, big picture thematically. I mean, people may go through and want to make word changes or picture changes or map changes or make some adjustments, but it's kind of how they've approached this chapter is how they'll start to tackle the other economic development and energy and housing are all going to kind of follow introduction is going to be short. It's going to be forward looking. It's then going to go into plain context where it's going to explain some things using maps and graphics and then it's going to go to the synergies where it has some infographics and some other pieces and then moves on to plan implementation. And so it'll all have a similar look and all have a similar feel, but that's kind of the template is what they need approved. So that way they can move forward and start filling in the other templates. And then we can start having discussions. Maybe we do have changes we have to make here because there's a word or a picture or something that we'd like to go and phrase a little differently. And certainly I expect when historic preservation goes through this, you know, when we do our public hearings, HPC will go through it and they'll probably have some input on things they would like to, you know, we should be emphasizing this a little bit more and we shouldn't be talking about that quite as much. Well, that's perfectly fine. We can make word changes. You know, all the way through.
So yeah, so my, my only ongoing worry is about polishing the the words, the writing. Cause it's, it's change, you know, it's, it's been changed around every time we've looked at it and I've kind of lost track of the things that I like and don't like about the way they've chosen to, to lay out the words in the chapter. So I understand we're gonna, the plan is to go over it at the end. I think it, we, we, we kind of have a plan, right, for the, for, for the language that's going to go into the, to the future chapters. They're going to give give us a chance to just review it and make suggestions for those, right?
Yeah, we're going to build them out as word docs and then send them over to you. So they're not going to build out web pages anymore like you, what, like you see now, because that's kind of work intensive, but now that they have the, the template, they're going to go and build out the word pieces. They're going to try to take as much as they can out of the chapters that we had developed. We developed the chapters without knowing how to write a storyboard. And now that we have a storyboard, we're going to kind of go in and grab the pieces we want or we think that are most appropriate to meet the template. And then we're going to build these things out and then go and provide you the word docs that say, these are the words that are going to go into the introduction. These are the words that are going to go into the plain context. These are the words we're going to use for synergy. And then you guys can go through and review those and kind of give a final blessing. We're hoping is this isn't a big process because we're going to be trying, as we said, taking from all of the chapters you guys have already reviewed and already approved. So the hope is that there's a little bit less, that this isn't a, a, a heavy lift for us to quickly be able to go through a number of these chapters to say, yeah, I think, I think energy looks pretty good. I think historic resources looks pretty good, but I changed these little pieces here. So we're hoping it's relatively quick and that we're not trying to spend, you know, an hour and a half on each word doc. And, and maybe Kirby, you and I, you usually have a larger editorial presence on these. So maybe we work with you to kind of go through before it goes to the planning commission, just to go through and say, all right, I'm going to take a first shot at this and then we'll go to planning and commission and hopefully it'll be pretty close.
Yeah, that's fine. That's, that's totally fine. And like you said before, we've, we've already gone through and tried to polish up the chapters. So if they're, the more that they're pulling directly from, from that stuff, the better. Yeah, that's the thing I'm nervous about because, you know, you put all this work in and if we, I don't want to, you know, fumble on the one yard line, so to speak, about, about the content. Anybody else have any other reactions or we, are we good with just passing on to SE group that to go with it, to, to follow this approach on the other pages? Yeah.
Yeah, these are good changes. I think they've, they've been helpful and I support, I'm using this sort of template going forward.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I think it's good. I think we've made a lot of progress. So it sounds like, it sounds like everyone's good with it, Mike. So you can let them know.
All right. Yeah, and I'll be in touch, Kirby, about what word chapters for the next, for the next meeting. We'll get a couple queued up. I'll get them to you to take a look at.
Yeah. And so the plan with those is what we, we'll, you know, we'll follow what we've done with the other chapter reviews, which is I'll distribute or I'll put on the, on the shared page, some edited language for everyone just to have access to. And sometimes because I have other stuff going on that they only go up like a day or two notice unfortunately, but I'll try to get them up sooner, just to get people a few days to read them before the meeting. So if, if people come in and we're able to review them ahead of time, then you know, we don't spend a lot of meeting time. Right. So yeah, so we'll just assume that. Okay, anything more on this before we move on? Alrighty. Well, speaking of language, there's public safety chapter language that I worked on a while back. And we reviewed it at the last meeting. So hopefully everyone's had a chance to look at it. I will share that also, though. But it seemed like we were in pretty good shape with it. Last meeting, by the way, didn't have a quorum. There was just three of us. So, but those of us who were there. We're good about it.
Yeah, sorry about that.
It was vacation week. I mean, you know, kind of to be expected. Okay. So I'm just going to assume that folks have had a chance to review it. So I'll just ask if anyone has any changes or feedback. This is a different kind of chapter because each agency kind of has its own mini chapter within the chapter. And it looked to me like some of these things were written by the agencies themselves because I don't know, there was a style difference between some of the paragraphs. Quote from agency to agency. As far as, as far as editing, the, I remember wanting to make, make sure we didn't have factuals, like, like, like opinion type statements stated as facts. So just kind of rephrase some stuff like in this case, the
Yep.
MCJC thinks that there's a long history of success as opposed to that's just like the city claim, claiming the city has success kind of thing. But the rest of it was pretty straightforward. I think. So anybody have anything about the chapter language for public safety? All right. So we do need to, we need to vote it out. And then it'll be passed on to SE group to do their thing. So if people are ready, we can take a motion to approve or approve and amend however you want to do it.
Well, I move to approve the corrections and edits in the document here.
Okay, so a motion from Gabe, give me a second.
Second.
Second from Aaron. Any discussion before we vote? Does anyone have anything? Okay. Well, those in favor of approving the public safety agency plan chapter language with the edits before us here say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Chapter language approved, Mike. Move that along. And what we have left on the agenda is review of zoning. So go ahead, Mike. Take it away.
Yeah, so I've been working over the past two weeks on putting together the strikeout version, which is what we need to start warning the zoning update and we won't probably do our warnings for another couple more weeks. Because we're going to still wait till after we get the country club road decision, but we can start reviewing those strikeout versions among the planning commission and be ready for public hearings. But there were a couple of places where we need to make some decisions and by we, I mean you, need to make some decisions on what we want to try to do. And we've had these conversations before. So I think for Maria and Brian, this will be new or maybe you were here for some of, some of these, but one of the ongoing questions we've had is about density. And what do we want to do to, every year, we've made some proposals and we've lost many of those. But we're back with another zoning amendment and did we want to put in a proposal this time? The, oh, where we got to last time was there's always been a conversation of eliminating density. It was a conversation that was a part of the AARP Congress for New Urbanism proposal that went through. There was a proposal that said, you know, density is, is not a good measure to use for regulation. Because it doesn't really get at what's important. So we've always supported the removal of density altogether. The only catch is, do we have good enough density, good enough design requirements that somebody can't just go through and this has been the concern of the public and, and folks that somebody might be able to just go through and start knocking down some of these buildings and putting in big ugly buildings in their plates. Because they don't have to meet density requirements anymore. So where you have a, you know, a neighborhood, you might be able to just go through and bulldoze a bunch of buildings and put in a lot more units. And that's been the concern. So we've always had a proposal. Maybe we just eliminate density altogether and go more with design standards. The last time the planning commission discussed, there was generally acceptance that we certainly could be able to eliminate the density in the design review overlay district. There is certainly enough regulation in that area to eliminate the density. There was maybe a proposal to just go through and say, let's try to eliminate density in a couple of districts. It's already, there already is no density requirement in urban center one, two, or three. So that's most of our downtown doesn't have a density limit. You can have as many dwelling units as you want in that area. I don't know if it went through in rez 1500. There was a conversation of eliminating it in that district. I don't know if that one ever went through. But that would be another idea, residential 1500 or a couple of these high density residential districts. Maybe we would be able to eliminate the density in those. So that was the second option or the third option, all districts, design review overlay. Just some districts, maybe that's the push. And then I had made a suggestion of maybe we just double double the density kind of as a way of keeping to release the pressure on things, you know, eventually making density, we may still have a density requirement, but it really doesn't come into effect very often because you know, it because it's not really what people actually do. And so let me use it as an example, we did already go through and say, if your property is conforming, that that if you're dense, if your property is conforming, that you can have a a duplex on any lot that has a single family. So effectively that's doubled the density. So if you're in a rez 6,000 district, you need 6,000 square feet to have a house, but if you have square, 6,000 square feet, you can actually have a duplex. But that doubling of density only applies at that lowest level. So if you're in rez 6,000 and you have 12,000 square feet, you're still only allowed to have a duplex. And if you have 17,000 square feet, you're still only allowed to have a duplex. It's not until you get 18,000 square feet that you can have the triplex. So if we doubled the density, then you'd get a dwelling unit for every 3,000 as you move up. So it would effectively allow a lot more units. But still, you know, everybody on the screen today, if, if you have a single family home is allowed to have a duplex, but nobody, none of you has probably run out to put in a duplex. And it's same is going to be true if we, you know, doubled the density and somebody had an apartment, just because somebody has an apartment with a triplex, doesn't mean they're going to run out and add extra units. Maybe they will. And that would be a good thing in some cases, but I don't think it's going to happen to the extent that people are going to be tearing down and bulldozing houses because they could add an extra unit. And I think that was just where I was thinking. If we just doubled the density, it would open things up a lot more without maybe bringing out the pitchforks and the torches. So those were the four that we had, but do we want to, big question, do we want to attack density again? And if we do, what do we want to propose? So I can put it in the strikeout version.
Okay, so last time we discussed this and anybody feel free to, to correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought there was basically consensus that we wanted to remove density in the designer review district and then also to supplement that to make allowed use for four units everywhere else. Like that, that was the plan we talked about before. The double the density idea, that sounds like, and folks jump in, but that sounds like something that could be doable if city council decides that that they're scared for lack of a better word, to actually completely do away with density. It can be a an, an option if it's put it more diplomatically, if the, if the climate's better for that. But it seems like, this seems like a plan B thing because, because partly because we, we want to get away from density. So we want to get people, we want to get away from people thinking about density as a way to regulate how our communities look because that's, that's not the point of it. So like that, that's one reason to do away with it. And also it just lets us focus our discussions on more important things. As long as we have density requirements, there will be discussions about density requirements. We kind of want to just move on and have a higher level of conversation. So I, I, that's the gist of what I remember about the conversation. Does anybody else have anything?
Hey, hey, Mike, I'm just curious. I think we talked about this a little bit before, but I just can't remember. And do you have a sense of, kind of historically, what kind of the level of public pushback on this issue has been and also the city council's reaction to it in the past? I'm not saying it should necessarily guide us, but I think someone instructed.
In the past, it's been a heavy lift to get these density changes through. With the exception of the single family to the duplex proposal. We had complained, we had kind of planned, I think only John and maybe Kirby were there when we did that. That was in the 2018 zoning and we kind of thought that was going to be a big deal and that was going to get a bunch of pushback and it kind of went through without even a squeak. So we were always very happy about that. But beyond that, council has been really reluctant and I think sometimes it just came down to some really hard pushback from the neighbors. Now I will add one other proposal we are looking at in, in my office is from the Historic Preservation Commission, who is looking at new demolition rules. So we, you know, as with any of these, you know, we make a significant change to rules. There's a lot of playing around with, you know, straw man arguments and trying to, you know, make, make rules that work across a broad spectrum of applications. And that's what we're kind of getting bogged down, trying to figure out exactly how to make this work. You know, we kind of see how things work at the extremes, but we're trying to see how things work in the middle. But I think, I point that out because I think if we had also, if we were attaching to this zoning revision about density, additional rules to clarify how we handle demolition, it kind of helps to take that argument off the table of, well, people are just going to come in, buy these buildings, bulldoze them and build something bigger. Well, you can't do that because of the new demolition rules. So it's, you know, we're hopeful that might be a little bit more helpful in, in making the case, but we're not a hundred percent sure we're going to get there right now. We're working with the HPC and with the Meredith, who's the zoning administrator to try to, try to hammer out those rules. So I think that will help. But yeah, it hasn't, it has not been an easy lift. I think last time we pushed for just the riverfront district. So that was the only district we were going to change. Maybe we could get density removed from riverfront, which was the next highest after urban center one, two, three. Riverfront would have been the most logical next one and city council didn't go for it.
So Brian, I think it's a good question.
Right to ask. I mean, I would say we have a different city council. Time is, you know, has changed, right? We've got Vermont legislature very actively debating this all across the country. We've got state legislatures really looking hard. All these same things, these same exact things that we're talking about are being talked about all over the country. And I, you know, the day will come where, you know, coming in, not in my backyard style, it's going to be like being an Archie bunker kind of person. Like it's just, people are going to understand that this is, it's really, we're excluding people that need places to live. And I think we should bring it. And I think the, like Kirby, you summarized exactly our last conversation. I think going in, we're basically following up on the guidelines that were Congress and newer urbanism and AARP. I mean, they were the ones who flagged this and I think we should test the waters. I mean, I think it's important. You know, two, two units to four units. I mean, that's huge. The design review district, I mean, that opens up a lot of things. I know we talked a little bit here about single room, room occupancy. I think there's a lot of There's a lot of, it may be really expensive to try to figure out how to convert some of these homes into duplexes and triplexes and quads. But there's a lot of buildings in that space that could be single room occupancy that would be great places for people to live and cohabitate, right? So anyway, I, I think we should test the waters.
I kind of agree with Gabe and Kirby too here. It seems, I mean, twenty eighteen is. Seems to be a very different Montpelier than twenty twenty-three. And I, I think the issues that are being discussed are just. So different nowadays. And I'm wondering how many of the same city council are even still around that. Looked at this five years ago.
Oh, the ones who are here from five years ago, I think are only two.
Yeah. So I think it's worth, yeah.
Yep.
And the face of the, well, it's not all about politics and Gabe, that was Aaron's question. I'll, I'll take credit for asking you. I'll take the credit for asking a really good question, but, but, um. Take your lead on the design review district and the, to the quad. Um. Even for my short time in town, it seems to me that there's opportunities there. And I do think politically, right? You, the face of the council has changed. Even in the most recent election, I mean, really. Not only the times change, but I think. That, uh, council has changed and you're right. I think it's what S one hundred, that bill that's going through the legislature. A lot of the stuff you, we've talked about tracks. Tracks that you're right game.
And I do have other proposals for the use table. These were just the big ones because we did, I did have some suggestions about splitting. Like multifamily into. Um, two different groups from, you know, five to fourteen is one set of uses, which would be. More per permitted or more permissible, um. And then. Um, using the existing table really just to apply for. Um, those that are fourteen, fifteen units or more, and that really just pegs multifamily to. What is needed in order to trigger a conditional use review? And that was really why, because you, you need to have at least fifteen units before you're going to start to trigger traffic. And so we really should just make an assumption that if it's less than that, it's permitted use. So. That's one of the changes that's in the use table. Um.
That's excellent, Mike. Thank you.
So that's one, uh, the, the other one is, it goes a little bit to the, to the SRO, uh, question. SROs are, are dwelling units in a lot of cases, but also the congregate living. Um, there's. A thought about how to break up the congregate living as well, and we had some discussions about maybe that. Um, right now, congregate living is all one line. And so regardless of whether you're a congregate living, you could have a congregate living. Um, I'll give an example. When I was in Berry City, we approved one in, um. It's kind of one of these, believe it or not, there are, uh. Two units above Gusto's, uh, in, uh, in Berry. So there were, but they were. Uh, Congress, they were actually room, rooming and boarding. Because they had rooms, but they shared, they were rooms with kitchens, but they shared a bathroom. So congregate living by definition is you don't have all five of your requirements. You share at least one of them. In that case, two apartments each had a kitchen, but they shared a bathroom. And so that was a rooming and boarding facility. So it can be as small as just two units could be a congregate living. Um. And that can go up to a dormitory of eighty, but it's one line in our zoning. So I thought maybe we would break congregate living into. You know, some kind of like smaller, medium and larger. So that way small congregate living would be easy to approve. You know, they'd be mostly permitted uses because they're going to have low impact on the, on the neighbors, low impact on community facilities.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll go through and make that change. I hadn't made that change. I just highlighted that on my list of something to bring to you guys to go through and say. Would you want me to kind of break this out in the same way that we have, you know? Under dwelling units, we have, um, one to four units is one of our classes. Um, small multifamily and large multifamily. That's how dwelling units are broken up. And I was thinking we could do congregate living in the same way, kind of a, a one to four congregate living and then a. Four, five to fourteen congregate living and a fifteen and more congregate living. And that way we're. We aren't also then, I mean, in all, you know, taking a step back and looking at it from kind of that fifty thousand foot. We're also not being discriminatory. We're not discriminating against congregate living. We're not treating congregate living any worse than we do a, a dwelling unit. Let's be fair. And, you know, uh. Uh. We're not saying one is better or one is worse than the other. We're just going to go through and treat them the same. And so that was a little of my thought and, and Meredith agreed. So I'll make those. Break that into three lines.
Uh, and just another, another quick question, and I'm sorry if this is a silly one. Uh, density is, is a very fuzzy subject for me. I, I, I conceptually have kind of a difficult time with it, but it, it, this has been a really helpful discussion. I was curious, um, I mean. When we were talking about. The ARP, you know, recommendations and, uh, the discussion that stemmed from it, I think primarily focused on. What we're talking about here, which is, you know, duplexes, triplexes, quads, you know, but. Would making the proposed changes that we're contemplating have any impact on? Other kinds of infill development, like accessory dwelling units, et cetera, or is that something separate and apart? And if, if they do have an impact, like what is that?
Um, so accessory dwelling units, basically that was why we did the duplex was to kind of take the accessory dwelling unit. Out because legally it's only allowed to be applied to a single family home. Um, so once you have a duplex, you can't add an accessory apartment to one of your duplex units. That would make it a triplex. Um, so it kind of. That was a little bit of why we broke it up, but now in this case, if we said. If you have a conforming lot, so if you're in res six thousand and you have six thousand and one feet. Then you could have a quadplex if you want to, according to what the planning commission is proposing right now. Now, if you have five thousand eight hundred. You can only have a single family home with an accessory apartment. Um, because that's, e- everybody in the state is allowed to. And we've, um, put these rules in place to, to say, and that's our rules we put in place. It says, we're talking about conforming lots. And ninety percent of all the properties in every zoning district are conforming. So for the most part, we're talking about most properties would be allowed to have between one and four units. And I think that would probably increase the amount of infill potential that we can see. That would be my, um, my, my thought on that where might make less of a difference is when people are coming in for larger projects. So we haven't increased the density for. Uh, multifamily. So if somebody were coming in to do, you know, a, a twenty unit building. There's, they're still going to be restricted by the density. Um. Of the, of the district. So you'd have to have that many square feet so that those larger projects don't benefit. As much as smaller projects would with your proposal. Except for the, in no density requirement in the design review overlay district. So obviously if you're in the design review overlay district, you'll have, um, unlimited. Unit potential, but you're also in the design review overlay district where it's hardest to demolish buildings and hardest to. You know, you're going to have a lot of burden in putting something new in.
How does the, uh, how does the, the project over at the Elks Club? Uh, impact? Because I don't, we'd have to do some zoning changes to make all that possible as well, wouldn't we?
Yeah. And some of that will have the conversation because that proposal will go through at the same time as this amendment that we're putting together is. So, um.
The only reason I raise that is because I think at least some of the conceptual drawings, there are. You know, larger footprint multifamily structures over there, right? So that would. E- even though we're talking about this design review district for the one area, there, there could be other areas that we say, hey, an apartment building might be. You know, good over in this other space.
Yeah. Well, so we're talking preliminarily about the lower area in the country club. So. Those of you not familiar, the, the lower part of Country Club Road near where the existing. Um, old country club building was or is, um, and where the flat area is around it, that area were. Estimating we would probably make mixed use residential or riverfront, kind of something like that, probably mixed use residential. Um, and that's got. Um, one unit per fifteen hundred or twenty-seven units an acre. So that might be enough to get. All the density that they're talking about. But certainly, um, it would. You know, we could have that conversation. And, you know, if, if we were able to add some of these on, as I said, I talked about doubling the density. If we had to double the density. Then we'd have more than enough for the multifamily. So if it's. If, if we end up adding some of these on up to four units on a conforming lot. And then we double the density for multifamily, then we've really increased the potential and density really doesn't become. An issue on the lower part. In the upper part, currently, as you see in like. Option A and option B are about residential six thousand. Residential six thousand is the same zoning district as College Street. So we kind of feel that's has the right feel to it. Um, but if it stays as townhouses and is built as single parcels, kind of as a condo. You'd probably be limited to those, say twenty-five or twenty-eight units. If it got subdivided into smaller parcels and then sold, then you could get double that because, or now four times that. So. There, there's a, there becomes a much bigger difference between the two, between. How much units could get built? Because if somebody subdivides it into, you know, ten single family lots. To put, um, duplexes, triplexes and quadplexes on, um. Then you could get a lot more units than you could as a condo pot project. But we can certainly go through and have those conversations as, as it goes forward. The other option is just to go through and say, well, call it residential three thousand. We got plenty enough. I mean. Not anything wrong with that either.
So, so Mike, you'll have a, you'll have a list, uh. Zoning changes along these lines, like in the near future?
For everything or for Country Club Road?
Uh, just, yeah, just everything, I guess. I mean, if, um.
Yeah, I'm going to be. I've gotten through, I've gotten all the way through to the start of the definitions. I've got a handful of definitions I have to do. I had a couple of places that were highlighted. And I had to find out what you guys wanted and we need to wait on Country Club Road. So I won't have a Country Club Road. Um. But I can make these other, these other additions up to four units on a conforming lot. I'm not sure how to do the design overlay district because it's an overlay district, but I'll have to just. I'll, I'll think creatively about how to.
Okay.
How to do that one. Um, so that was. The density, um, can if, are you, anyone else have questions on density before I go to the next one? All right. So the next one. And I don't know if Marie and Brian were here for this conversation, but I know everyone else was solar access. Do we want to go back and, uh, charge the windmill on solar access with our new, with our new ones here? And one. One that I might do is to get a legal opinion on that one, because now that we know that it actually may not be legal for us to do this. I might get a legal opinion from David Rue that might give us a little bit more to go through and say, but if you guys said, no, we don't want to. Ruffle that one again. Then I won't.
So, so the context last time, um, so like last spring, when we had some zoning changes and. Yeah, the, the things that didn't get passed by city council were, um. A, a re- removal of density requirements in the, uh, river, um, riverside neighborhood. And which was, that was going to be like a tester thing. I mean, we were throwing it out there and then. We didn't do anything to try to get any kind of support and there were, um. It turned out to be, you know, it, it turned out to be one of the things that, that people who were unhappy about a lot of the zoning proposals. That they spoke about. So anyways, it didn't have a lot of support. I want to say a few things, uh, and then solar shading was the other one, the thing that, that we're talking about now. Those were the two things that were approved last time. Both of those things. Um, my read of the city council, based on their emails to me too, was we, there were supporters. Uh, and, and when they voted against it, there was an invitation by, um. I don't, this is embarrassing that I'm blanking on his name, but the person who's now our mayor.
Yeah, Jack McCullough.
McCullough, uh, you know, Jack was acting as the head of city council in that meeting also. Because, um, Anne was for queues for other purposes, other reasons. But, uh, anyways, Jack himself back then said, please. You know, do more work on this and come back for both of these issues. So, so I, I took it that the support was there from the city council just. We just didn't get the votes because there wasn't. A perception of public support is, is basically. So, um, I, I think that, yeah, they, they've invited us to come back. So I think that maybe we should with the shading. And, um. Part of the, what we need to do with the shading issue. I'm going to stop and I'm going to catch you guys up in case you don't know what I'm talking about. In our zoning. Uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, in our zoning right now, um. If you were going to construct something new, uh, there's, the zoning cares about the shading that you create. And what you're building on your neighbor's ability to put up solar panels. Um. It's not just about blocking current solar panels. The way it's written right now is if it might block future perspective solar panels. Then you may not get approval. Um, and, uh, we try to. Simplify that and we tried to make it less strict because it's, it's really, really quite strict as it is. Um. We, at the time, when we realized the city council was not a, was, was skeptical of the proposal. John Adams, who as you all know is great with maps. Did some mapping and discovered that ninety-seven percent of the shading in Montpelier is from trees. And that we really don't have a buildings causing shading problem. Um, and. Uh, he also, John, John also pointed out that. Um, the whole thing might be counterproductive anyways, because if you build up a new roof, say. You can put solar panels on top of it. So whatever, whatever shading is being created. Space for solar is also being created. So why stop the building, you know? Um, so anyway. That's, that's where that was, uh, and Mike, you can, you can supplement the explanation, um, as well, uh. But the gist of it was, yeah, that they, they were interested in us coming back, um, and it was really. I would say wanting to, wanting to not be perceived as doing something that's. Counter renewable energy would be the main reason why the, uh, the city council kind of backed away from it.
Yeah. So the zoning rules are extremely broad. They actually say you can't shade walls, roofs and yards. So really you can't even shade somebody's grass. So it was really the way the, the zoning is written, it's, it's extremely broad. And so we proposed to just eliminate it, but we also, uh, except for protection of. Existing and proposed solar facilities. So you couldn't shade an existing or proposed, um, solar panels or something to that effect. Um, if they just limit it to roofs, then I think that's less of an impact, but, um. Uh, eventually where this comes down to is. And it was actually pointed out in two thousand eighteen, but, um, it was in the middle of. A giant, some, a, a lawyer had come in. In opposition to the zoning and in a list of his many, many complaints against the zoning. One of them was actually that this was a violation of the theory of ancient lights. And I was like, yeah, whatever. And I let it go. Um, turns out it actually, there actually is this theory of ancient lights, which says that, you know, no, no, there's no state in the United States. That allows you to, that, that grants you as a right, as a property owner. The light that appears on your property. So, and this really comes down to, if you think about like building in New York City, a fifty-story building. Um, if there wasn't this theory of ancient lights, then. Everybody who gets shaded by that new eighty-story building would be able to basically come in and oppose the project. Because you're casting a shadow on my house. So there is no, uh, no state in the country allows you to say that you own the light. That crosses and, and so therefore shading requirements would break that, that theory of ancient lights. And we would be one of the only places in the country. Shading requirements would break that that theory of ancient lights and we would be one of the only places in the country that regulates it. So. Turns out they were that that complaint, that long list of complaints about the zoning actually had one that was right, so. Um, and I know this because we then had this. Set of rules appealed to court last year and the person who appealed it lost, but they lost under other. Other extraneous stuff. Um. So, but it did bring up those points and so we could certainly go and bring it up to go through and say, hey, you know, not only does it. Really, really strictly inhibit inhibit and prohibit our ability to do infill projects because. You do a development, you build something and you have to make sure it doesn't cast a shadow on the shortest day of the year. So when you're casting the longest. Shadow, you can't shade. Any of these other places, and so it's really absurd. Um, so that's some of the background that um. That we really. We really shouldn't from a constitutional standpoint, but you know, my question for you guys today is. Do we bring this up again? And if we do. How far do we want to go? Do we want to try to go through and say, hey, ancient lights? We should get rid of the whole thing, or are we gonna make a more of a political play and say? Let's try to restrict this just to something. We're only gonna apply it to roofs, or we're only gonna apply it to this, so that way it's not taking such a big bite.
You know, when I, when we this first came up, I went and I was just looking at, you know, like the most progressive states and, you know. California is like number one leading and solar energy. And their case law is basically what you had proposed is the solution, right? It's like if you have. If you've got nothing else, right? You have to have an existing or, you know, you've got a permit to put one up, right? If you're. Creating a problem for a project that's been approved, well, you can't do that, but otherwise. You know. You you same same sort of thing. I don't remember if that was in there, the ancient lights idea, but I think between that, having a legal opinion. It's just not legal and then having John's analysis, which is like, what? This this city couldn't exist. Like we'd have to demolish the city to be in compliant uh with these rules, right? If we apply them retroactively, so.
And remind, was this part of the twenty eighteen? Is this part of the? Recent. That rule put in place in twenty eighteen, is that what?
Yeah, it was first put in place in two thousand eighteen and then we tried to. Amend it and remove it. At least at least once and maybe twice.
Why was it put in?
The the. It was, it was suggested by our consultant. And um. And it was because we had a very pro. Um, you know, we're gonna be net zero and we want everybody to do energy efficiency and we want to do all this. Um, the rules kind of went in without a lot of. Um, and again. When we redid the zoning, it was everything. So there was a lot of stuff that didn't get as much careful review as other things. And this was one. I didn't like a lot, but I kind of. Managed to wiggle it over to a place where it wouldn't get used very much. So it's only in. Major. Site plans. Which we don't get very many major site plans, but one place you that is a major site plan is new construction. So if you're constructing on a vacant lot, that's gonna. And it's larger than a single or two family. Then it's got to go through major site plan and that's where you get tripped into this this rule. So if you do a triplex or a quadplex. And I think one of John's suggestions uh in the past was, well, let's take site plan and. Make one to four unit. Projects exempt from site plan that would then get. Most of these. Out of it, but again, it would still exist. So there there are a couple of ways of. I guess minimizing the pain, it's still there, but we minimized the number of times it's gonna show up, but at the same time. It's probably, it may not be constitutional and it's. Generally, I think a bad idea. Um, and I thought so at the time, but. You know, you pick your battles.
I like the idea of limiting it to. You know, casting shade on solar panels or. I think Dave, like you said, if someone has like a permit to get a solar panel, so it's not just like this, like. Amorphous someday, maybe. I would want to get a solar panel in my backyard and how dare you? Um. So, yeah, I think. To me, that's a good. Kind of. Uh, limiting. Feature as opposed to just getting rid of the entire thing.
Yeah, and that's probably where I would go. It's where we ended up last time, two years ago, was the proposal was really to, or maybe it was last year. To just go with existing and proposed. Um, and we can define proposed however we want. Um, because I think that makes sense. If you've if you've invested in a solar panel. Um. Especially, most of these should be rooftop solars anyway, so. Uh, and it's. So, um, yeah, I I've got something I can put together for that and that would um be able to fill in that line there.
Um, yeah, I think I think let me let me jump in real quick. I just I think this this time, you know, we're trying to trying to be smarter. Um. Uh, this time we'll just make sure that in our proposal that we include John's research. Um, I think, by the way, I think you were asking if we. Thought a legal opinion was a good idea and it sounds like we do based on what I heard. Um, so if we can put in John's research in with our proposal and we can and we can include. Um. Any legal opinion we receive. Uh, I would say that ask for the legal opinion, I wouldn't ask for just any, like for that one theory, though, I would ask for just. Generally. Um, what's the legality of this provision? Um.
Well, he was our attorney when we went to court this year, so he's he's already somewhat familiar with it, so it won't be an out of the blue thing. I mean, it's it's a set of provisions. He's already looked at because we were sued under that um or an appeal was made. Under that provision.
Is this still being litigated?
Nope.
Oh, no.
It was a, it was a strange. It's just, it was a, it was a strange appeal in in its foundation, so it was really more of a. What you call it, uh, it's um. They like they weren't in the design review district. They thought they should be in the design equal protections. So they said, uh, this is a violation of the equal protections clause under the US Constitution, because I'm not in design review and I should be protected. In the same way that properties are in the design review district, so.
Oh, okay.
It was kind of a real, it was kind of a reach and there was, but it also drew in the. In under that same argument, there was an equal protections that said, I'm not protected by this, the solar access, but I should be. And so under equal protections clause, I should be protected under these rules.
Okay.
And so. You know, our attorney did look at it from, but not from the standpoint of. Um, what we would be hoping it would be looked at. Um, you know, we want to see, we were kind of hoping like, oh, this would be good. We can get a get a. A look at this from an from a an attorney, but that that part of the question never came up.
Okay, yeah, I remember you telling us about that now. Okay. Um. So, yeah, I I just think I think that, uh, you know, for this and for the density thing, we'll just want to. We're just gonna make sure that we. Put in our memo, our explanation to city council, you know, our full reasoning and make sure we do a good job with that. In addition to uh. The other things we've talked about too.
The the other recommendation we may do, because you know, we've all gotten, uh, you know, uh, comments from Peter Kelman and from other folks that. That we don't do enough outreach at the start. So what we may do is get our proposals put together even and even before we hear from Country Club Road. We may have some time as a planning commission to just go through and have a public. Input session where we say, hey. This is not the public hearing. There's gonna be a public hearing, but we want to invite people to come in and talk to us and we're gonna. Put information out. Maybe we can get an article in the bridge. Maybe we get to go and say, this is the proposal that we're going to be making and we'd love to get your input. Before we warn our public hearing and these are some of the big things that we're gonna be looking at. We're gonna make a this recommendation about the density and this recommendation about the density. And this recommendation about solar access and whatever else we want to put in that list, so we can. Have a meeting with the public before we have our hearings, so that way people can't say. You never asked us our opinions. Well. I that would be a a recommendation to to you guys to maybe think about and we I can organize that with. The staff here and. And do that when we're ready to go. So the last one I wanted to run by you, um, I I've heard. You know, from from Gabe on this one, um, you know, a couple of months ago now. Um, is regarding what we call the campus P U D. It's a planned unit development, so. Planned unit developments are subdivisions that kind of fall under special rules. Um. Lets you make them. You know, smaller lots, think of. A classic planned unit development would be a clustered subdivision where, you know, maybe you have ten acres of beautiful farmland. Um, you're allowed to have five houses. And each one has to have two acres, so you subdivide the whole farm field and it's all gone, but what somebody else decides is, hey, if I can put all these down, I could put my five houses. Each on half an acre. And then leave the rest of the land open. Um, that's better for everybody. Uh, I've I still got the same number of houses and I've conserved it and you do that. It's a planned unit development. It lets you kind of bend the rules. It lets you look at the whole parcel to calculate your required. Dimensional requirements as opposed to each individual one needing two acres. You're like, well, each one is gonna have a smaller. Frontage in a smaller lot size. Um, but overall, the densities are the same, so that's. Oh, you know, one way you do a P U D, um, and that's kind of a classic one. Um, and another one we have in our zoning is called a campus P U D and it was designed actually very specifically to look at. How we're gonna handle V C F A. Um, and one of the special provisions in there, because you can have special. Rules that break the zoning. Basically is is how it works, but usually it just allows for dimensional, lets you break the rules with dimensional stuff. In this case, it also allows you to break the rules on uses. And this is where a lot of people in the neighborhood on College Street and and other places that really had concerns about. Should we um, in our campus P U D does go and say, anything that is a permitted. Or a conditional use. Becomes a permitted use. In the. Campus P U D. You no longer have to go through the conditional use review. It's just becomes the administrative permit. And. The campus P U D can request from the D R B other exemptions, so other uses that are not allowed in the district. Can be added into the district as well. Um. And so that has kind of gotten a lot of people scratching their heads and saying, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that. Uh, it really kind of sounds like it's the Wild West. Um, you know, the planning commission writes the zoning to allow things. Uh, based on densities and districts and everything else, and suddenly everything goes out the window. If the D R B decides to to give broad things and these carry forward forever. Um, so it really becomes very difficult to claw these back in the future, uh, as opposed to what happens with a lot of people is. Hey, I think this use should be allowed in the district and then everybody gets the right to do that use. Um, so we did hear, I did hear from a number of folks as the campus P U D was going through and eventually it failed. The the V C F A did not do the campus P U D. Um. But uh, how the campus P U D rules came about was really through. I was working directly with Tom Green and the folks at V C F A when we were writing the campus P U D rules and we kind of had two approaches going. One was. Um. In the past, so before two thousand eighteen. That was medium density residential district, so it's a residential district. Colleges are not allowed where V C F A was. Nothing was allowed up there. You weren't allowed to have colleges. You weren't allowed to have all these uses, so really was a problem. To for them to to do any. You know, adaptive use of their buildings. They weren't using a lot of their buildings. They wanted to. You know, lease it to the state for office use. Well, you can't do that. It's not allowed. You're in a residential neighborhood. So there are a lot of those types of issues. So we had two approaches. One was to come up with a campus P U D, a new set of. Planned unit development rules, which would give you more of the flexibility that you need. You approve your your master plan. And then we'll let you get some uses that you're not allowed to have. At the same time, we were talking on the other side, maybe we would just rezone this area. Stop calling it m- medium density residential. What what we could rezone it, something that would give it more uses. And we did eventually do that. We made it. M U R, mixed use residential, so a lot of new uses are now allowed in that area. And they got the campus beauty, so they got both. So the question now is, well, because you've got most of what you wanted here in the mixed use residential, maybe you don't need, you still need the campus P U D. Because the campus P U D allows you to do other things. You get to have uniform signage. You get to have a shared parking agreement, so you can do, you can sell off all those buildings and everybody has to meet uniform design standards and. Sign standards and. Um. You know, the density requirements are shared throughout, so you can, you know, the green. The development potential of the green is used in some of the other buildings, that type of stuff, and you've got the shared parking agreement because. One person's gonna have the parking lot and everybody else needs that parking lot, so there's a shared agreement. Um, eventually, they decided a different route to get it done, but at the same time, the campus beauty still rules still exist. And I thought it would be a good time, especially now that nobody's applying for a campus P U D. It might be a good time to go back and revisit that question of. Should we allow the D R B to adjust the use table? Or should people who are in those campus P U Ds, you know? You're gonna get a whole lot of other benefits from other things. One of them is not. Being allowed to do uses that you're not allowed to do, that other people don't have the right to do. And I hope that makes some sense. In all my rambling.
Um, I think that makes sense. Um. Like, what you said makes sense, uh. So, well, we created a new neighborhood, mixed use residential. But there's still things that go on in the campus that are not. Permitted uses. In the neighborhood that we kind of custom made for. That location.
Well, mixed use residential exists at the college. It exists on Elm Street. North of Spring Street, so as you go up Spring Street until you get. I don't know to to where that little parking area is for people to go fishing. Uh, it's on Northfield Street. Northfield Street's another section from. The intersection up to and including. Um. The Econo Lodge. So all of that is all mixed use residential, so they didn't get any special zoning. They got the same zoning as these other places. But they do have a lot of uses. You could be, you could put a hotel up there because we have a hotel. In the Econo Lodge, you could put. Uh, office uses, so there are a number of things and and we've talked a little bit about tweaking a few things. You know, maybe a few of these should be adjusted. Um, use wise on the use table. Because I think you can have personal and professional services, but you can't have an office. So I think one of the proposals is we'll put off law offices in there. It doesn't make sense that you can't have a law office. On Northfield Street or Elm Street. Or up up on.
Okay.
So we'll add an office in, but other than that, we kind of thought most of the stuff that's going on is is well covered.
Uh, it's well covered by mixed use residential and what's allowed. Yeah. Yeah, we could take a look at it.
So is the proposal basically to anything that's currently allowed a mixed use residential but isn't in the campus P U D? That we move it into the campus beauty? Is that what you're saying, Mike?
No, what I was gonna remove, actually, it's removing language from the campus P U D. Um, that gives the campus P U D. Applicants and the D R B the right to approve. Adjusting the use table. For uses within that approved P U D, so you know, there'd be, there are a list of uses and. Somebody can come in and apply to add stuff to it that isn't allowed. And usually it just comes down to a fairness issue. Usually, when you create a district, the idea is, uh, everybody within that district is. Treated fairly, you, you know. Um, you know, I can operate a garage or I can't operate a garage and my neighbor, if they're in the same zoning district. You know, we have the same rights and limitations. Um, this kind of chain tips the scale to campus P U D to go through and say, well. They're gonna be allowed to do things that nobody else in the district is allowed to do. Or be able, or be able to get them to be permitted uses. Where everybody else are their conditional uses, so you would have a hearing. If you want, I think a hotel is a good example. I think a hotel might be, I'll just use that as an example. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't, but a hotel. Um, might be a conditional use. And if they got approved to make it a permitted use, they could just come in and do it as an administrative permit. And there's no public notice to neighbors and it just goes. And there's no public notice to neighbors and it just goes through much quicker. But there was a reason we said it that hotels should have a conditional use review because of their impact on the neighbors. So.
Couple of things come to mind for me. One of them is that the campus up there is unique and. I don't think it's fair of us to say to say that. It should be compared to some of these other. Places in town that. Are different. You know, like. The Elm Street Strip that you mentioned is, I live right next to it, and I get how that makes a lot of sense for mixed use residential. But it is very different than the College Green. Um. So, you know, that's one thing that comes to mind for me is maybe they should not be the same neighborhood. Maybe we should treat the campus as a unique thing because it. That's just the reality. Um, another thing that comes to mind, and this is like a kind of a minor issue, but. I've got to say, ever since I've been on the plan commission back in two thousand eighteen, when we talked about P U Ds back then or nineteen or whenever we, you know. I've always thought that. The P U Ds we offer don't really offer much to people. Um, I've always thought like if I were a developer, I probably would say, well, what am I going to get if I go through all these extra P U D rules, like. A little bit more density, you know, like, like a lot of the cases, it, um, so, so I I don't know. That's just like a footnote thing, just to say that, like. It would be nice to have a discussion or or when these things come up for us to keep in mind. Like. Wh- what are we trying to get out of P U Ds? What are we trying to entice people with? And is it going to be, you know, useful on both sides? Because I don't know. But my general opinion is that that. That the the developers don't get a lot out of the P U Ds, um. Or at least a lot of the options we have, but this was a case where it sounds like there was a P U D that did actually offer something. Um, of of some convenience, um.
No, and I and I agree with you, Kirby, and I've I haven't. You know, it it kind of goes back a little bit to, there were two, two groups as we went through two thousand fourteen to two thousand seventeen. Um, one group went and said, let's make the densities really. Low. So, um, you know, low density. And then have these P U Ds which have higher standards. So if you want low, if you if you don't want to do these high. You know, these really nice standards. Then then you only get low density and we'll kind of. Can't use a little bit of extortion to kind of get people to do this. And. The other group that came in and said, just make rules if 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 we want people to develop. Then we want them to. Make make it easy for people to do what you want them to do. And make it hard for them to do what you don't want them to do. We want people to build more housing units and have more density. And what we're doing with. You know, option A was actually making it harder. To do high density development because you've got to meet all these, you know, sometimes conflicting and ridiculous rules. Um, so really what ended up happening is we ended up with, again. Both groups got what they wanted. So we ended up with high density. New zoning, so ninety percent of everything is allowed. Uh, everybody's allowed to have duplexes. All these rules came into effect to allow high density development and we had all of these other. P U D rules. But most developers don't need the P U D rules because we basically have zoned things. Appropriately, I guess I would say, so. Uh, you know, I agree with you, Kirby, that I I don't think. Ultimately, the P U D rules are are offering developers much, but I also honestly. Don't think we should be. I I don't think we should necessarily be pushing in that direction. Um, I would rather see us, if we want things done, find some good rules. Apply the good rules objectively as much as we can. And not make developers jump through extra hoops.
I I agree with you. I mean, I've I've always thought P Ds, it just seems like a gimmicky thing. It's just. It seems like, I don't know. When I studied environmental policy, there like all the rage was. Like using the market to make people do the environmental correcting. Let's create a market for this pro environment thing. It's like, what? Or we could just regulate it normally and take care of it. We could do that too. And not have gimmicks, you know, so.
There there are times like like our general P U D and our footprint P U D both make a lot of sense. Um, we've got people who look look at both of those. And and the conservation P U D makes a lot of sense, and that was the one I told you about of, you know, protecting the farmland. We don't protect the farmland. But you will see conservation P U Ds come up a lot when somebody has a lot of steep slopes or a lot of wetlands. And it just makes sense to go through and say, I, you know. Our zoning says you can't build up there. But you own ten acres of this land that you're not allowed to build on. Great. We're not taking away your development rights. Pull that development down to a place where you can develop. And just put more of the density at the bottom and we're fine with that because we get. The protected steep slopes or wetlands or whatever it is. Um, and you the property owner developer, um, didn't lose any of your development rights. You know, you still had them. You just. Had to put them in a higher density in a lower spot. And so. You will see those three occasionally play out from time to time. Um, but really all these, um. You know, more exotic ones that we have in there about the infill P U Ds and the new neighborhood P U Ds. Most developers probably wouldn't do. Um, and you know, I I won't. It it, you know, Gabe took a hard look and he probably could say more about, um, the. Cottage Cluster P U D because he actually looked at it in a project, so. But again, even that, I I don't know how valuable. It ultimately would have been. It's a, it's a good. It's a good design, but sometimes you can do these designs without. The P U D rules. As well.
It sounded to me like the the campus P U D idea. Was. They wanted to use that to stray from. Having just purely a residential. Zoning, is that? That's just kind of the way I understood it.
Yeah, in the past, so before prior to two thousand eighteen, it was mixed use residential and they had. A college P U D at the time or something like that. So.
This is V C V C F A.
Yeah, it was in, oh, it was in A I P U D, an academic institution planned unit development was the special P U D that used to exist. That, uh. That they had taken advantage of, um, and that was how the college could make some changes up there. But it really was very difficult to use, um. And very arcane. And so when we were redoing the zoning, they wanted something new. And so we worked out new A I P U D rules that we call the campus P U D. Um. And then eventually, at the same time, we recommended these other zoning changes. Put it in the new zoning district and most of its. Issues went away. Um. Because that new zoning district had enough density. To meet most and most of the uses. So it kind of fell into place that. You know, even now they're selling the buildings and they said, well, we really don't need to do the campus P U D. We'll just sell the buildings without the campus P U D and be done with it. And that's what they're going to do.
Um, yeah, I I guess we don't, we don't, this is kind of a premature discussion because. You know, Mike's going to bring us something later, um, for us to consider. But, um.
But if the sense is you want me to remove it, I can remove. You guys can always put the, you know, put it back in. It was just. I'm trying to feel out a couple of places where. I just wanted to kind of get your sense of what your, where your. Minds are at. If you're like, no, just leave it in there. We we like the P U Ds and I would, I'll leave it in there, but.
Uh, if unless, you know, this is the only part of town. Well, I mean, I guess, I guess there's other places where.
And well, anybody that we did generally. We wrote the, we wrote the campus P U D generally, and we did that intentional because we didn't really want to just allow this P U D just for that. Um, college. So. Anybody. Could come in with a campus P U D anywhere else in the city as well. Um, there's nothing that limits it just to that area. So somebody could be down on Route three oh two, uh, they could be, they could be up at the Country Club. Um, and decide that's what they're going to apply as a campus P U D. Um. So the rules would still exist to allow the flexibility in changing uses. So. I can always just come through and make that proposal to remove it. And if you guys decide to leave it, then it's easier to just put back in.
Okay, just just to make sure everyone's on the same page, um. So Mike's talking about for the campus P U D to remove. Um, the benefit of having an automatic approval for conditional uses, um, and. You know, the conditional uses would be for the neighborhood that that campus happens to be located in. So they would vary depending on where it's located. Uh, in this, in the case of the College Green, it's mixed use residential. And, um. Yeah, I mean, if we're talking specifically about the the College Green, and maybe this is a can of worms, it probably is. I would. Think that maybe the best policy would be to make that its own unique neighborhood. Um, that's, that doesn't have to necessarily follow what exactly mixed use residential is. Um. But it sounds like that's a hot topic recently because of the sale of the school.
So if somebody buys the building currently, Mike, right, and they they bought it. Under the idea that they're in this campus P U D that provides all these benefits. And then we change or rezone or any of that. Um, are are there repercussions for the people who bought the building, assuming that there was going to be a certain type of process and procedure allowed or?
Who, who, V C F A withdrew their campus P U D application. So now there's no, they're just selling it without the the P U D.
Whoever buys it, they're just buying mixed use residential.
They're buying mixed use residential.
Okay.
Um, so the 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 question started to come up with, all right, now we've got a blank site. Once we got into it. And had the public hearings to try to go and do the campus P U D. That topic, that allowable, that that chance to allow the college to. Do things that aren't allowed, plus making conditional uses, permitted uses, was. Probably the number one complaint that that and the number one concern that we heard from neighbors. And so I thought now that we're in a, in a, in a state where nobody's applying for it, nobody has one, nobody ever got one. Um, maybe now's a good time for us to kind of revisit that. With a, you know, because we we're not actually. Deciding any cases, uh, we might as well take a look at it and decide, do we want to keep that allowance in there? Because that was the number one thing we heard. And it may not be a good idea as, you know, as the professional planner, I'm not sure it's a good idea to allow that. I think if somebody wants that. That should come through. A a larger process. If you want to allow, if you want something, it's not allowed in the zoning. You should have to come back to the planning commission and we can revisit in the same way that we have for Pioneer Street and a couple of other applications. People are like, hey, I I want to do this. It's not allowed. And we said, well, we'll move you from this zoning district to the next zoning district next door. That's what we did on Pioneer Street.
So I I would say I I agree with Kirby that we probably, and it's probably not for this round of initiatives. I think. You know, since it's, it's a good time to talk about it, since it's, you know, not. We're not being pressed on it, but maybe it's the next thing where it probably, it is a unique space and it probably should have its own rules. Uh, but we should have it in a format where we can get lots of feedback from the public and have a good decision making process.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that. Um. So, yeah, sounds like, Mike, you can write it up the way that you said, uh. You know, taking, taking one of the perks out of the campus P U D. Um.
And if we, and if we.
Your reason, your reason is good. Yeah, your reasoning's good. I mean, there's a reason why, um, you know, conditional uses have an approval process, so. Ditching it arbitrarily is, um. Could could lead to. Unintended consequences, so. But we can, we can have this discussion because we're going to have to go through all these, you know, zoning things when Mike puts them before us to vote. Uh, so we'll have another chance to to consider this.
Yeah, and I appreciate the help because just. Like I said, if any of these came back to, no, don't bother doing it, then I'm not going to spend a couple of hours putting something together. And that was just why I wanted to kind of float a couple of these by that are like. I know we've talked about these in the past. What do we want to? You know, what do we want to do? Because I can go forward and make the strikeout copies and get stuff ready to go. And bring these up to you guys and we can start going through a lot of stuff, um. For Brian and Maria, for for you guys. Most of these end up coming through as just typos and and line outs and punctuation, you know, you're, there's probably going to be. I think my list has sixty five changes on it right now, um. But most of those are, you know, typos and change this and move this section and. We'll have a handful of maybe ten of them that are actually substantive changes. And then wind up with a one or two zoning changes. So I I don't think this is going to be a big. There's not going to be a big hearing, except as it comes down to. Probably most of the things we just talked about. Um, and. Country Club rezoning. Um, that'll probably be. You know, fifty four changes and all the comments are going to be on five things. So.
Yeah, that sounds good. That sounds good. And, um, are folks okay with what Mike said about, um? Uh, engaging with the public and and kind of doing a meeting before the official hearing. Yeah, okay. So we can plan for that too. Anything else, Mike?
Uh, nope, that is it for the zoning. So on to the minutes, I guess.
Okay, so yeah, we'll just have to consider the minutes and then we can. Move on along. Um, so minutes from April tenth. Folks can review that, um. From the email. Uh, with the agenda. And I'll take a motion. Or any edits. Before that. When you're ready. I liked that the, uh, minutes, um. Didn't, didn't say that Kirby was really mean, so. So that was nice.
It's on page two.
Oh, there's a page two, oh, no.
No, I'm just kidding.
Were you really mean?
He wasn't.
I got, I got kind of grumpy. That's the group. Um, just because we were seeing, we were seeing the same things over and over again and that without, I don't know. I didn't, I didn't feel like there was sufficient improvement, so I got a little grumpy. But I still feel guilty about it. So I, so now I'm hearing that in public. Again, well. My grumpiness is a public too, so. You know. Um, everybody see the, see the minutes? Any, any edits? Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I moved to approve the nets.
Okay, motion from Gabe. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Brian. Uh, there's a favor approving the minutes. Say aye.
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 We posed? Okay. Uh, does anybody have anything else before we adjourn? Okay, well, have a super evening. It's still lovely out. And see everyone in two weeks.